So I have to go here.
You can do it from a screen where you just clicked out. So down at the bottom.
That's right, I have to do your.
I'm gonna get, go ahead and give one more minute. Jennifer and Greg, do we by chance have, I have the agenda for tonight for Budget Committee, but it's the agenda for, I think, the entire meeting, and I'm looking specifically for budget, where it has what the set levies are and the amount of budget that would be approved. Helen, do you know what I mean?
I have that, I have that information. Would you like me to, how would you like me to share that?
Well, I think.
Put it on the screen after we discuss. What was that, sorry?
It's okay. Can you share a copy with me via email and then at the same time, at the, when we're ready, we'll put it on the screen?
Perfect.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order our second Budget Committee meeting at 6:01. And the first thing I need you to go ahead and do is look over the minutes for the April 27th meeting, please.
Okay, Kat, you should have that in your email.
Thank you. Does anyone need more time looking over those minutes? Are you good to go? Give me a thumbs up if you need more time. Okay, any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? Okay, can I have a move, motion to approve those minutes, please?
I moved to approve.
I'm sorry, can you state your name when you make that, just in general, can we state our name when we make a motion? So that our person who's taking minutes can.
This is Melissa Daly. I moved to approve the April minutes.
Brian, okay, hold on, we got everyone talking over each other, so I'm just gonna ask you guys to wait a minute. Jen, will you please go ahead?
Yes, I am trying to add the interpreter. For some reason, he popped on, but he wasn't on the interpretation, so I need just one moment, please, to transfer him over to that.
Yes, we can do that. So as soon as Jen is done, Brian, I'll come back to you and then we'll deal with Melissa's motion.
You don't need to come back. Man, I was just saying we need to deal with the interpreter.
Yeah.
Kat, this is Rick Lee. I'll second the motion.
Okay, can I have you hold on, Rick, until Jen's got everything finished? That way, the interpreter can interpret whoever seconds.
Can we have the interpreter talk and see if it's going the right place now?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Okay, so hold on, it won't work.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch to Spanish mode, which means you won't be able to hear me now.
Okay.
Okay, can you show it now?
Me escuchas?
No, we can still hear him.
Okay, one second.
Rick, I did hear your motion for your second.
Okay. I think it should be working now.
Okay, can you try interpreting again, please?
Uno, dos, tres, se me escucha.
Okay, not quite working.
I think this happened before and what we had to do is all get out and.
Now, this is a different time, this is different.
It's a different.
Because we have one of the interpreters working perfectly and one of them not.
Oh, here we go.
I'm still seeing that we're in a practice session. Does that change it at all?
Ah, that could be it too.
Okay, thank you for noticing that.
No, we're no longer in a practice, I don't believe.
Greg, would you like us to try to exit and then come back?
Not yet, because like I said, we have one interpreter working and the other not.
I have a Spanish selected, by the way, language on the lower right hand side.
There it is, now let's.
Okay, can you try again, please?
There we go. I wanna go on record that that was not Jen's fault. The Zoom thing was like not giving the update button until we did it for the fourth time, so.
It's okay, it's all good. Okay, so I have a motion by Melissa and a second by Rick, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of passing the minutes for April? With April 17th, is that correct? Yes, or April 27th, please raise your hand. Bob, Joe, or Bob, I, I guess. Yeah, I can't see if you guys are raising or not. All those. All those declined, raise your hand. Abstaining. Okay, can we please go ahead and now go to our minutes from May 18th? Does anyone need more time? Okay, any additions, deletions, or corrections? Can I have a motion, please, to pass the minutes for May 18th?
Kim Mihailov, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Anyone second?
This is Bob, I'll second.
Thank you. Kimberly made a motion, Bob seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Hands down, opposed? Abstaining. Okay. Thank you very much. I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Nikki at this time.
Okay, great. I will share my screen in just a moment. Okay, are you seeing the presentation? Great. I will share that I'm in a little bit of a remote area, so if I'm bouncing in and out, somebody let me know and Joe will jump in and, and share the screen and so maybe it'll work a little better, but we'll see how it goes. So tonight, I'm gonna provide some updates. We have a few updates since our last meeting. Answer some of the questions from the previous meeting and then hopefully we'll move on to have somebody make a motion to approve the proposed budget and then approve the tax rate and the bond assessment. And that's the language that Kat was asking about earlier. And so we have that out there to help you through that process because it's kind of a lengthy statement and so we have that for you, so don't be worried about that. Okay, as far as updates. So when we last met, we knew there was a lot out there about upping the SSF from 9.1 billion to 9.3. So that has moved through the process and we did receive a new estimate that confirms that that's where we are. So based on comparing those two estimates, going into the next year would be an increase of about $860,000. And since our last conversation as well, we approve an amended SIA agreement. And I'll go through what that means in relation to the 2122 budget here in just a minute. But it impacts ending fund balance from this year going into the next year. And there were a lot of questions around that from the last meeting, so we'll talk about that a little bit. And then also I have added the one grant that was kind of a last minute one for our summer enrichment and credit recovery. It's a state grant. And so I'll share some information about that, so. From my proposed agreement, this, we'll need to add this amount to it and I'll show you what those totals are. But it's just the one state grant that we're working on, going through that process right now, so. So a lot of our discussion last time was around the ending fund balance, so I tried to outline it a little bit differently to try to explain how we get there. And so, looking here for the 2019-20 budget, what was that? That their ending fund balance would roll into a beginning fund balance the next year at 6 million, but that was.
You go back, Nikki, I'm sorry, can you go back a second? You froze, so we missed part of it. Okay. You got the 2019-20 beginning.
So the 2019-20. But.
So Nikki, can you go ahead and have Joe share his screen, please, and let's see if that helps and if you need to, turn off your camera?
Thank you. Sorry, I think I'm sounding grumpy and I'm not.
Oops, you can go back. Let's see. Stop.
Nikki, yeah, go ahead and stop sharing, okay, and I'll put mine up.
Okay, can you hear me now for a second, hopefully?
Yes, thank you.
If not, I'll try to call in and do it that way, but. So I'm looking at the screen for 2019-20, what was budgeted was 6 million. So we were planning from 1819, that 6 million would be coming into 1920 as a revenue line, that would be a beginning balance. Now, but actually came in with 7.4 million. So in that year, we were above what we estimated by 1.4. And the same thing happened the next year. So it was budgeted 7.5 million. When we came into the year, it was 9.3. And that's where we had a lot of, you know, the COVID stuff was starting, all of that kind of business. There's a lot of variables in that area. And we really froze the staffing because of a couple of years before that when we had all the reduction. So we kinda really held tight to that because we wanted to be in a better place. So looking ahead to next year, in the proposed budget, I have 9.9 million. As I was building the budget through April and we have to have, but in print at the end of April, that was a good estimate at that point. And since that time, there's been some changes and so I'm putting out there about a $12 million ending found, ending fund balance rolling into the next year. And, and so looking just below that, as I'll talk about in the board meeting following this, our current ending fund balance looks at about, looks like it, it's about $10 million, 10.7. I do know that we're gonna owe money back for the current year, just under 500,000 so far. But we'll receive more tax number, that tax money, that number will continue to change as we go into July and August even, because we'll receive tax money for the current year well into next year. But that's the estimate I have right now. And then I backed out a transportation adjustment because I had transportation encumbered in there for a normal school year. And the beginning of the school year, obviously, we weren't running as much. We were running food, we're delivering food, but that looked a bit different than regular routes throughout the year. And so I backed some of that out. And also, we have worked through some grants and we had a balance in our SRR1 grant. And also the SIA grant that went to the board at the last meeting. So after those amendments were finalized, we're able to move some of our big ticket expenses over to those grants. And what that means is it frees up money, the general fund, that will contribute to the ending fund balance rolling into the next year. So with all these things starting to happen and all these adjustments between the general fund and the grants, I'm estimating at the end of this year, we should be at about 12.6 million rolling into the next year. Even though the proposed budget is at 9.9, if we spent that, the budget completely down, you know, that was the concern that we were talking about at the last meeting, that we would just be sitting on the contingency amounts, which is just under 4 million. But looking at this, it would really be the 4 million plus the 2.7 that I expect this year to be over what is budgeted at this point, or what is proposed at this point. Does that make sense? Or are there any questions about that?
Nikki, I have a question. This is Ron. Tell me more about the grant and potential grant that's at the bottom here, the 1.5 million. You said that because we got the grants, we were able to move some things we were gonna pay for, for with regular money onto the grant. But I'm assuming that those things, if they were in our regular budget already, would be things we're gonna plan to do the year after next. And there won't be, will there still be grant money for that? Or are we gonna have to put it back in? And if that's the case, how does that affect how the picture looks? I just wanna know that, I don't wanna make a mistake where we move something out and then don't anticipate the fact that it's gonna come back into our accounts in the, in the following year and, you know, be a part of the budget that year or expenditure. And I, so I'd like you to say more about.
Right. Right, right. No, I get, that makes perfect sense, Ron. So the technology piece is around the SIA grant, so that was the one we just talked about, the last board meeting. Where we had a lot of staffing included in that, and since the hiring was so difficult in the COVID environment, we just didn't hire various physicians, a lot of it was counseling, mental health physicians that weren't, we weren't able to find. And our partners weren't able to find, a lot of them weren't gonna be hired by our partners and not necessarily by us. And so since we weren't able to spend that, we're able to transfer that budget into a different area. And we had purchased a ton of replacement Chromebooks, hotspots, all those technology pieces in order to do distance learning. So we're able to offset those one-time costs over to this grant, which has helped build up that ending fund balance. In the next year and a little bit down further, I'll show you the plan for some of the SRR money. That will come back also for approval and further discussion, but kind of how we've mapped it out to help cover that over the next couple of years. As we kind of bridge this gap, because I think, you know, I think we're all hopeful and we expect that the enrollment rule will improve. Life will get closer to normal and we'll see those numbers come back up. And the same thing with the one that says potential grant, that is a shift. So the first one's around SIA, different pieces. The second one is around the SRR1 piece, that we had a chunk of it going to staffing, but we were able to pay for Chromebooks and so that just opens up room in the SRR, well, it's a shift between grants, so it opens up room to move these big ticket items that frees up space in the general fund, basically. So at this time, at this time of year, we're sitting there and we are reconciling all of these grants that have to be spent by September 30th or June 30th. We're able to really zero in on those things that might be underspent a little bit and be able to push those things out of the general fund. And that's where these calculations are coming in. So. But they are also things that in the next couple of years, we have them covered under other grants. And in year three or year four, we will have to look at and be sure that we have some of these things built into our general fund and regular funding streams. So that is a discussion we'll have to keep an eye on as we go. But we are hopeful that as our, the SSF will keep growing and our enrollment will keep growing to be able to do that at that time.
Nikki had a couple of questions. Said that the positions that didn't get hired would normally be hired by our partners. Who are our partners that you're referring to there?
Um, so the, isn't it Yamhill County Mental Health? And that is hiring, all that Joe can confirm the name.
Yep, you're right.
So they were hiring the counselors and so it's kind of a shared, shared position, but they're gonna be placed on our, in our buildings. So we'd have access, you know, at all grade levels, we're gonna have access to them.
Okay, so we're bearing some of the cost and they're.
Right, yeah, yeah. So I believe that's, I can't recall if it's about 50/50 with them.
That's right. Yes.
But it's very helpful. We get quite the support with those partners with half of the money and it's really, it's really good for our students.
Okay, and then my second.
I'll just chime in quickly, and the 50/50 went into Yamhill Community Care Organization and they're funding mental health at elementary, middle, and high school, as well as a drug and alcohol counselor. And those are through Lutheran Community Services at Elementary and Middle and then Yamhill County at the high school level.
Thank you. And then, these numbers are based on the same enrollment estimates that you showed us at the last meeting, is that correct?
Well, these are, these figures are based on our current ending fund balance and activities right now. And, yeah. So I'll talk about the little bit about the SSF and the, that adjustment here in just a minute. I'll try to outline that a little bit clearer.
Thank you.
And thanks to Luke for pointing that out. He's our partnership guy, so he remembers everybody's exact name that I don't all the time. So that was perfect, thank you. Any more questions on this information? Okay, I think we can go to the next one. Okay, so with the information from the previous slide, trying to outline here what I expect or any found, can we talk? Going into next, or at the end of 2122, not going into next year, but when we complete next year, if we were to spend everything down, we would be still, we would still have in our account the appropriated at the 1.7075, the unappropriated 2.7. The SSF increased at 860,000 that we do not have included on our revenue at this point, so it would not be expected to be spent. And then the estimated difference for 2021 ending fund balance going into the next year that I just talked about with those different changes pushing expenses over to the grants and things like that. So at the end of 2122, I would expect we'll be at about the 7.4 million dollar ending fund balance range going into 2223. Looking at those different pieces. Are there any questions on those or where they come from or anything? Okay. As I spoke to in the first, in the agenda, this is the estimate for our summer learning grant. So this is that very quick grant that we're gonna be spending over the summer where we're doing K through 8 enrichment and then credit recovery at the high school level. And so I plugged in here about 1.2 million, almost 1.3 million. I'm not sure if we'll stand up to this. We're trying to build the program very quickly, but at least we would have the capacity to use all of our allocation because I plugged it all into the budget. So that's the maximum that we can use in those two pots of money. Are there any questions on that? Okay, Joe, can we go the next one? Okay, this is just a snapshot, making that adjustment. With adding that last grant in there, our total proposed budget would be 264,628,071. So this is just to bring it all back around and this is what'd be our grand total for the 2122 budget. You go the next screen, Joe. One of the questions at the last meeting was specifically around what our step increases and COLA and those sorts of costs are and that were built into this budget. So as you can see, step increases, and this is across the board for all groups. So this is classified, this is licensed, CSPT and admin. CSPT and admin have not negotiated their MOU for the upcoming year. We're in that process now. But I did estimate a buffer in there based on what the other groups received. So that's already in the budget. And then I built in, well, the step increases are the normal step and then COLA is based on what the other groups received as well. So that's already built in based on these numbers. The 410,000, also in the budget, I spoke about adding a couple teachers for licensed staff for dual language, ELD, 1.5, and then a 1.0 placeholder. Because we always seem to get into the new school year and we have a surprise. So we usually try to put one or two licensed placeholders into the budget just because we don't know when a classroom or a certain school might just get a little bit too big where we have to backfill something somewhere. So that piece is in there. And then also there was the district office staff changes that we talked about in the last meeting as well. And so those in total are about a $410,000 difference. Joe, do you want to go the next one? And so Joe talked about this at the last meeting, talked about the idea around using our SRR funding to help offset some of these costs. And it's a way to help our families that are struggling and just help alleviate the stress going into the next couple of school years using that funding or a portion of that funding anyway. So you saw this last, are there any questions on this piece? And I'll, and I'll show how it ties into the next screen here in just a second, but were there any more wonderings about this information?
I do have a quick question about the class fees and like participation fees. So it. I'm a band geek, sorry, so I'm a little biased on that one. With waiving the fees, is there a cap on how many, you know, students and participation, you know, potentially you could get, you know, if we open it up to more people? And is there a cap?
I don't believe we talked about a cap, but I'll let Joe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, and, and the, so specific to band, we actually have instruments that we do loan to students for a no-cost rental. Some people choose to rent their own. And then we have other instruments. Um, and then we have other instruments for that. So we, we constantly. You know, we do our repairs and we do an inventory to make sure we have enough instruments for the kinds of things that kids take. So. Specific to band, there, there isn't an additional fee, but. You know, these are the same, the same fees that kids are, you know, taking all these ceramics as an example. Um, or culinary or things like that nature. So. Um, we don't have a, a cap, but you know, kids are going to be able to schedule the classes are going to be able to schedule. Um, we don't, we looked at kind of the overall and it kind of goes. Um, up and down a bit, but if we stick to that forty thousand, we should easily be able to cover all of the. The fees at, at the secondary, at the high school and then the twelve thousand is a really good estimate for both middle schools, but. I, I don't foresee to have a huge run on those. Um, our athletics may go up a little. But again, we already covered, uh, and I think it was in one of our sides last time. It's about three quarter million dollar outlay. Um, and we bring in back to ourselves just seventy five thousand. So we're still putting out the same amount of money for those. Um, I don't expect to see a huge run, um, but we'll, it may increase a few, a few kids. Anything else on this one?
And I would just add that the purpose is to increase participation. So having some kind of limit would be. Countering to, to the whole purpose of what we're doing with it.
I, I guess I do have a, a question. Uh, in, I don't know about band, but in some of the sports. You could get squads that are too big and there'd be interest probably in having another J V squad or something. Uh, has that possible financial implication been worked into this model? Having to.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it, uh, it depends on how many kids come out and, you know, we've got a, um, being able to schedule games and things like that. But yes, it's, it's not going to be, um. It's not going to be a huge make or break on, on the budget. If we have to add a, you know, J V two team or, um, you know what, we try to keep this as balanced as possible, but. Um, but we have some, some wiggle room to go and deal with that if necessary.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great. Are there any other questions on this one? Okay, can we move to the next one? Oh, whoops, I got an extra in there, huh? So this will help clarify, help answer some of the questions from our previous one. So this is looking at our different funding streams coming in through S R. And we're talking about S R one and S R two. So the top section is S R two at the two point three million. And S R three is the second one at five point three. So you see where we can fit in athletic fees and student supplies into the budget for the next couple of years. Um, and we still have a little bit of a balance in the S R two for things that might pop up. Um, and where that comes from is the top line there where we have technology at one fifty. Um, because we're able to put some of that technology over into that S I A grant. That opened up room over here to cover other things that apply to these grants. So that's where some of that opened up the door. Um, to offset some of those costs. From the general fund into these different grant funds. And so I just wanted to highlight that there where we do have the capacity to cover that into these funds. And it really fits what the purpose is for the recovery piece for these two funding streams. But this is, these are plans. We will still come back. We have discussions around them. We need to. There's certain, there, there are more strings with the S R three funding as far as. Um, loss of learning pieces. So the work that we do under that, we, we will be talking about how that's going to impact the loss of learning. Um, from the, from COVID and being out of school. So that's going to be all through our process and they'll put out there. Um, but this was the initial plan based on the numbers that we received. Um, and how we can balance all the needs of the districts. Along with the general fund and just have all those pieces working together. Um, so this is kind of our backup thing. If something was to happen with enrollment. It doesn't bounce up like we were supposed to. We can look at some pieces here. And adjust them and reallocate more to staffing if that is the need and that is, you know, that becomes a primary need where we need to offset some of these other items. So that's how we're looking at it going into next year. And as we go into next year, we'll learn. A lot more about our enrollment recovery going into the following year. So that's really going to be. Where we have to make adjustments throughout next year, looking at the following year if things don't recover as we expect. So. I just thought I'd share that. Are there any questions on this? Okay.
I just, I'm sorry. How much more do you have on your presentation?
I don't think I have very much. Let's, I can't really.
That reminds me of a general question. I'll wait till the end.
I think we're about there. It's your time, Ron.
Okay. I, I, I think there's a question for both you and Joe. Um, my impression of the strategy here is to try to keep the staff intact. Even if we have to sort of bridge. Uh, a time when we might technically be overstaffed. I mean, you know, having small classes or something. Uh, and is that, is that the case? Or are we taking? Uh, some unusual measures here to try to keep the staff through counting on long term, still needing them, starting, starting if not next year, then the following year, that kind of thing.
Yes, I mean, I would agree with that. I'm sure Joe can share as well, but because there are so many question marks next year, we really do not know. Those numbers coming back, we don't want to make reductions now. Um, and then be in a hiring frenzy, you know, the end of August, early September. Um, and so we are really looking at next year's the bridging year and using these funds to do that. So, yeah, I think that's accurate. I don't know if Joe wants to add to that.
Sure. I mean, in all years of all years in the history of all of our careers and probably lives. This coming year, we don't know where kids will be when they walk in the door. We have, they have been. Out of our schools for a while and I just, I don't, we can't even anticipate the level of need. Um, for the students coming in. And so I think one of the, the primary drivers behind. The feds actually putting these dollars together is to keep districts whole so they don't go through this. Um, contraction and expansion and people coming back and who knows where people are. You know, one of the other moves that they made. Um, was to fully fund, like we've been doing our summer feeding program and like they've been doing throughout this last year, was to make meals free for everybody. So that takes a burden off of us to do all of the counting. Let's just get kids fed and figure out where, where everybody is. So the, of course, the long-term strategy is to, um, find ways to keep your staff the way they are. You know, as far as the numbers go, and we know that, that kids will come back. And if nothing else, in the next couple of years, we have a lot of work to do and even more than we. Can, we can't even measure that level of work yet. And so by keeping our people on. Um, we're going to be trying to figure out how to support all the kids to come back in their different states. Um, you know, in one of those last slides, you saw some of the dollars are putting toward. Mental and behavioral health, because we know we have to increase spending in that, our S I A plan, including additional, um, therapy. Um, keeping our teachers and our, um, educational assistants whole and trying to be able to run the organization with. Um, a whole set of factors that we don't yet know. And so of all years next year and probably the year after are our best years to. Keep our people on, figure out what it looks like, let the dust settle on the enrollment. Um, and, you know, we have multiple caveats. We have multiple kind of plan A, plan B and a. There's a C and probably three or four Ds, uh, as far as plans go to figure out what's next and we'll have to adjust. And that's why. We wanted to show you the S R two and the S R three. Um, but those are in flux because we don't know, we don't know, and we have to get ready for that in our next budget season. How do we continue to? Manage the combination of funds between those federal funds. Um, our ending fund balance that we've spent the last three years scrimping and saving for, so we would have a, a moment in time. On a rainy day and it's pouring. And so we're kind of trying to do a combination of all those funding things. And if we have to. Um, trim staffing numbers in the future, then we can have a longer tail and we can figure that out. But rather than making. Some fairly quick or rash decisions about that, we think it's important to be as whole as possible. And come at this next year with as many possible supports for as many kids as we can, because. It's, it's going to be a, a, a rough couple of years and people have been working. People have been working really, really hard, all of our staff members, um, across the organization. So next year is a time for us to. Regroup, figure out what we need. If we need to make adjustments, we'll do it in the, in the next year. Um, but I think that that's, yeah, go ahead.
You didn't mention, uh, catching people up academically. I must, my daughter doesn't like it when I talk about lost learning because she says the kids are learning something else. But they're not learning some of the things they're supposed to have learned.
Sure.
And so I'm assuming in some of the traditional areas where we look for it, that we're going to have kids that are behind where they would have been, had there been school in normal. Normal conditions. And you didn't put that on, I didn't hear you put that on the list of. Extra resources or extra effort that we're going to be making. Can you say more about that?
Sure. I don't like to talk about it in terms of recovery and loss. I do like to talk about it in terms of acceleration. So we have some kids who are stuck back a year. We have other kids who've moved ahead. We have a lot of work to do in all of the academic recovery, if you like to say, or the academic acceleration where kids are. We have some kids who've done very well. Um, but the majority of kids have had a very hard time. And so, uh, our work in supporting. Um, all of the things they need to do and all, and we just, you know, some kids may be okay in math and not so okay reading or the other, you know, vice versa. So we really don't know, we don't know as far as academic supports go. You know, we have the systems in place we've used before. We've used R T I, of course, um, our P L C work will be even more critical. You know, we won't be looking at dark squares on the screen when kids don't have their cameras on, they'll be sitting in front of us, at least more of them. So, yeah, the academics are, um, and that's why we're. Um, proposing to, you know, keep staffing levels where they are, because we need to, to have teachers and assistants in classrooms. To figure out where we are and, and move them ahead as fast as we can. That is our core mission. So we will, we'll be focusing, of course, on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, as a, this is Melissa. Um, as a part of that, what would the summer programs consist of?
We have a couple of summer programs that are already. In, uh, in progress. So one of them is just a simple, um, credit recovery at the end of, and for high school. Um, to try to catch up anybody who is close or maybe not close, so we can continue to keep them on track for graduation. Um, and then on the other end of the summer, um, we're having a jump start. Um, so for eighth graders going into ninth grade. Um, so they can kind of get a jump on that and the same thing for. Our kids going into middle school. We have migrant summer school, which we've done forever and migrant summer school. Uh, is from a different funding stream from, from migrant education. So we'll do that one as well. Um, you know, it was interesting because there were lots of opportunities to apply for grants and funding and all these things in the summertime and they came to us. You know, in April, uh, or May, and they're pretty hard to plan all those, um, things out. We're hoping that they'll continue on, um, with those things next summer. Uh, we think we could provide a fairly significantly robust summer school. One of the challenges we've had, of course, is for hiring for summer school because. To be honest, people are tired. And so we've had less, maybe a little bit less interest in wanting to do summer school because people need to break. So. Um, I think we'll be staffed by then, but a lot of this is about recovering credits on one side and also. Um, helping, uh, students get started for that next major transitionary grade level.
Great. Are there any other questions? At this point? Okay, so I think I would go back to Kat then to see if we have a motion.
Yes. Can you please go ahead and share that on the screen?
Sure, I will do my darndest right here.
Actually, you know what? I can do it.
Oh, you got it? Okay.
Yeah, would that be helpful?
Well, if you have it there, you're, you might be more stable than mine is right now.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, can someone give me a thumbs up if you see it?
We can see it.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so we're going to go ahead and have two motions this evening. The first motion would be to, um. Bring forth the budget for two thousand twenty one, twenty two as presented. Um, or as amended, if there's an amendment to it. And then our second motion will be at a tax levy rate, um, which will be four dollars, six thousand, six hundred, sixteen per thousands. Um, and that is a sat, a, a set levy rate. Um, and then the next motion actually would be with the levy at Valerum. Of, um. Six point four approximately, but you'll have to read the whole number. So let's go ahead and start with the first motion. Do I have a motion for the budget?
Yeah, this is, this is Bob and I would like to move to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty two budget as presented.
I second it. This is Rebecca Pyros.
Thank you for saying your name. So we have a motion by Bob, a second by Rebecca. Are there any questions or discussions at this time? Okay, we're doing with a raise of hands. If you're voting, please go ahead and make sure your camera is on. All those that approve the motion. Please go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, go ahead, put hands down, please. All those. That are nay, please go ahead and raise your hand. And abstaining. Thank you very much. The motion has passed with the approval of the two thousand twenty one, twenty two budget as presented.
Excuse me, was it, did it pass unanimously?
I'm sorry, yes, it passed unanimously.
Thank, thank you.
Jen, I'm, I'm correct on that. Yes? Can someone verify?
As far as I could see, I didn't see anybody.
Thank you. Okay. Next motion, please, for our, um, permanent tax rate.
I, this is Brandy. I move to have the permanent tax rate on add Valerium taxes of. Four dollars, sixty six, sixteen cents per thousand be applied to the taxable property. Within the district as determined by the Yamhill County, Clackamas County and Washington County Tax Assessors for the twenty twenty one, twenty two year.
This is Melissa. I second. So we have a motion by Brandy, a second by Melissa. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented by Brandy, please put your hands. Hands down, opposed? Abstaining. Rebecca, that unanimously passed also.
Thank you.
And then we have our third motion, please. To motion about an add Valerium.
This is Kim Mihailov. I move to levy the add Valerium taxes for debt service at six million, four hundred, forty one thousand, six hundred and six dollars.
Motion by Kimmy?
Uh, this is Brian Shannon. I second.
So we have a motion by Kimmy, Kimmy, and a second by Brian. Any discussion?
It's Kim Mihailov, sorry.
I, I apologize. Thank you for correcting me. I do appreciate that. Thank you. All those in favor, please go ahead, raise your hand. All those opposed? Abstaining. Motion is passed as presented. Okay, any last? Questions, comments, concerns?
I just want to thank everybody for being involved in asking questions and I had a few side conversations with folks. Um, I really appreciate the extra questions and understanding. That people are, you know, wanting to learn about it and understand exactly what's going on. So thank you.
I'd like to take a second to just thank our budget committee members. We don't come together often and I know several of you are long serving and you were with us in twenty eighteen when it was difficult and. Um, it's exciting that you've all stuck around and stayed on board and have helped to see the districts through the times where we're. Um, you know, consciously looking at our, our ending fund balance and having a robust and healthy discussion around priorities. And I appreciate all of you and I hope to. And I appreciate all of you, and I hope to see you all next year in person when we do this.
This is, excuse me, this is Rick Lee. I'd just like to add one quick comment. And that that's what I really appreciate, the compassion that went into this budget. I really appreciated. Dr. Joe's comments about the unique year that our students are. And faculty are, are students and teachers are coming back into. And I think we're being smart about using the. The extra money that we're getting to offset the the fees for students who are participating. And I like the mental health aspects to it. I just think that there's a lot of. Recognition in this budget. I've I've served on this committee several years, and this is unique in what we've all experienced. And what we have going forward. So I appreciate the the thought and heart to win this budget. Thanks, Rick.
Okay, the next portion will be the budget will be presented to the board meeting, I believe. Is it June eighth or seventh? June eighth. You're welcome to come to that meeting and see the budget presented and a motion to pass it. Other than that, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn our final budget committee meeting for two thousand twenty-one at six fifty. Thank you.
Thanks, and thanks, Kat, for running the show again.
Yeah, no problem.
Just hang on the line here.
Yes. Yep, our, this will be the same panelist link for the board meeting.
No, leave that.
Alright, I'm gonna start talking a little bit, so hopefully people start coming back to their screens, so we can get started on time. There's Bob, Becca, Joe, Jen. Oh, Jen, I was gonna say, I'll, I'll point this out in the meeting as well. But before we get started, the, in the consent agenda, the minutes from our last meeting, it says that Vice Chair Ron Mock called the meeting to order. And it was actually me, but I'll point that out when we do our minutes and everything.
Perfect, Rebecca, thank you.
Okay. Kedinez and Ron and Brian. Does anybody want to volunteer for leading us in the flag salute this evening? Oh, I see your hand, Rebecca. Are you volunteering?
Yeah, I know, okay to do that.
Okay, cool, thank you. And Ron, I think we have one public comment tonight. Do you mind doing our, being our timekeeper? Thank you. I think you said yes, I don't know. Perfect, there we go. Okay, seven o'clock, let's get started. I call to order this meeting of the Newburgh School District Board of Directors. And Director Pyros has volunteered to lead us in the flag salutes whenever you're ready, Rebecca.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So, in our agenda tonight, quite exciting. We'll go, we'll do our public comments. And like I said, I think we have one public comment this evening. We'll move into board comments and superintendent comments. And we'll review our consent agenda and get our monthly financial report from Nikki. Then we will look to approve the amendments needed for the twenty-one, twenty-two academic calendar. We'll see the twenty-one to twenty-three SIA plan from Derek, take a quick break. And then there's some new business of house cleaning. Proving a no charge on our construction excise tax that's related to our bond work. Food service budget resolution that Shiloh Physic is bringing to before the board. Another resolution accepting the funds from the awesome grant. And then the board will have their first read of the proclamation brought forth from Director Brown. And then we've got a quick limmat EST board election, and then, of course, we'll move into policies after that. So there is one quick item on the agenda. I would like to get some clarification on really quick, Jen. In Derek's presentation, so it's page one forty-three of our seven hundred and twelve page board packet. The the item says twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one SIA plan amendment. And then the wording talks about the amendment, but the the motion is for. The upcoming plan. I think, I feel like that's language from our last meeting when we were looking at the amendment. Is that correct?
It may be, yes.
Did anybody else see that?
Are you talking about on the board docket form?
No, I'm telling you, well, no, on the board docket, or on the agenda, it says it correctly, but it's actually like in the packet on page one forty-three. It feels like it's language from last meeting, because what we're actually doing is approving the twenty twenty-one, twenty-three plan, not amending the twenty. Twenty-one plan, right?
Yes, that is what we're doing. Where it's not the amendment from last time. It, there may be some language in there from the other one, but it's, I think. Think it goes into saying that what we're actually approving. At the emotion. So I'll have to review it really quickly, but.
Yeah, no problem. Okay. So with that, let's move into our public comments. And I believe we have one public comment from Molly Codina this evening. And while Jen's getting Molly queued up, I'll just go ahead and remind everybody. The Newburgh School Board invites and encourages citizens' attendance and involvement. So thank you very much to everyone who's come this evening. All Board of Education monthly business meetings, with the exception of executive sessions, are open to the public and are conducted in public. But not necessarily meetings for public participation. But the board encourages citizens to share their ideas, opinions, raise questions, concerns, or compliments. Let's see, request to speak or not accepted after the meeting starts. And in order to conduct a timely meeting, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. When called, please state your name, your relationship to the district, your place of residence, and the subject that you'll be addressing. The board may choose not to address your request if your topic is outside the scope of board governance. And we ask that you remember that Oregon law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performances. Okay, and I see Molly, let's just give her a second here to. Get on screen. Hi, Molly, welcome.
Hi.
Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
So my name's Molly Codina. I'm a Newburgh High School student, and I live here in Newburgh. And I just had a couple of questions and concerns about the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Daily high school schedule. So I have heard reese quite recently. Quite contradicting statements about what it's gonna be. I've heard that it's gonna be a block schedule, but I've also heard that it. Might possibly be a seven period a day type of schedule. And I just wanted to kind of voice my opinion, and I have. Gotten my opinion backed up by quite a few of my peers as well. That I think it would be more beneficial and helpful to us as students. To have a sort of block schedule and not have seven classes total a day. For many reasons, one of those reasons being that. That would pull a lot of mental strength to get through that. I, my freshman year and sophomore year. Did seven periods a day, and it was very challenging. And it also contradicted with like after-school schedules, whether that be being sports or people having work or anything. It also has occurred to me that with the block schedule, we would have the opportunity to get a few more credits. I believe is what I talked to my counselor about. And it would put a lot of kids on more of a set track to graduate. And get in the education that they necessarily need and want. And I just think it would be something to maybe talk with students and parents more about. In the decision-making, if that's possible, because. It really, I think, affects the way we look about learning and processing information. Especially with the extra time in block schedules and all that. So I was just wondering what the intake is on that. And what we were thinking about doing for that next year.
Great, thank you, Molly. Thank you for your questions, and I'll I'll follow up with you in an email. The board doesn't. During public comment time, engage directly with with people who are giving comments, so. It's not just you. Don't take it personally. It's just part of the structure of our meeting, but I'll definitely be following up with you, and thank you for coming out and joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move into board comments. Does anybody want to volunteer to start us off?
Okay, I will. I just want to apologize. I missed a a line in the Pledge of Allegiance. And and it was. I was. I have an audio descriptive on my my iPad, so I can tell what's happening, and something came through that, and I. And I, it was no ill will, or. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you for volunteering. Okay, I'll just go on the screen. Bob, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, I just wanted to share, you know, how exciting it is that. Have kids back in classrooms now. We're starting to have more and more activities. You know, right now, the, as we speak, the. Advanced band at Chaham Valley Middle School is having. advanced band at Chaham Valley Middle School is having a performance. And you know, we've gotten to a point where I believe that the audience is able to be outside without masks on. And it's very exciting to see these developments and changes and know that our plan is to be with kids full time in school next year. And it's just very gratifying to see the work that our teachers, our staff, our administrators have done, our families and students to get us to this point where as a, as a state and as a society, we're able to get back to more normal functioning of our schools. And that's, that's very gratifying to see that work come to fruition.
Uh, Dr. Shannon, do you have any comments this evening?
Uh, very brief. I just want to congratulate the winners of last week's election. I look forward to working with them to make our schools better places for our young people. And I wanted to thank Bob and Ron for their work on the board.
Uh, Ron, do you have any comments this evening?
Yeah, I do. I wanted to thank all the people who helped with my campaign and those who voted for me for their support. They say school board member is a thankless job, but this has not been my experience. And I wanted to thank the kindness of so many people who have thanked me, said supportive words for me both before and after the election. Trevor DeHart beat me. I congratulate him and I hope he finds service in this way to be as satisfying, enjoyable and worthwhile as I have. Um, I think that's all I want to say now. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, do you have any comments this evening?
Yeah, I was gonna say Rebecca, thanks for always leading the, the pledge of allegiance. You do a great job. So much appreciated. I know change is always hard, you know, thanks to Ron, Bob. And I know you guys put a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of effort. And then, uh, you know, with that to the budget committee, that was a lot of work from those guys. And I think Rick Lee said it pretty well there. So, uh, Rick, good words. That's, uh, it's, it's nice to have all those people that are so good at this and they keep coming back and doing it again. So to the budget committee, thank you very much.
Uh, to Director Penya, do you have any comments this evening?
I do. Thank you. Uh, it is one week since the election and although the results are not official, I feel confident in being reelected to the Newburgh School Board of Directors. This means I will continue to have the opportunity to push for an equitable education for all students. The, this campaign challenged me more than I expected and all I can say is thank you. Thank you to every supporter, those who donated financially to the campaign, those who donated their talent, those who donated their time. This campaign wouldn't have been as successful without each and every one of you supporting me. To my work family, thank you Kapasas for allowing me to embark on this journey and granting me the flexibility needed. A special shout out to the wonderful women who carried this campaign. Lydia, AJ and Brandy, I'm forever grateful for lifting me up even on the hardest days of the campaign. To my family and friends, thank you for putting up with me and my emotional roller coaster. It is incredible to know how much love and support is in my corner. Also want to recognize Ty's campaign as we ran together as women of color, hoping to make big equitable changes in Newburgh. Though the results were not what we anticipated, it goes to show that there's still a lot of work to be done in Newburgh to end white supremacy and racism. I'm excited to continue working towards a more equitable Newburgh. And I know I will be working with Ty, even if it's in a different capacity. Lastly, I want to thank Ron and Bob for their contributions to the board. I appreciate how welcoming you both have been to me. And your support has taught me a lot about navigating systems that weren't built for people like me. Thank you.
Thank you. Minor brief this evening as well. I just want to thank our community for actively participating in this recent election. It's tough in May and everybody is overwhelmed with life at this point, but I think everybody who got out, who voted, who thoroughly thought about the candidate that they hope to support, we appreciate that. And I'm excited to continue to work with Director Penya and I'm excited to get to know our two new board numbers. I'm not excited. I'm not looking forward to losing Director Mock and Director Woodruff's voices on this board. You have both brought years of service professionalism and a team building approach to your service and that will be greatly missed. Thank you to Ty Hardenmore and John Reed for your time and your commitment to the students of Newburgh as well. Okay, with that, we will move on to our superintendent comments with Dr. Morlock.
All right. Thank you. Looking at the length of the board packet, I'm going to spend the next 45 minutes with my comments. Totally kidding. I've just got a couple of quick, short ones. I do also want to thank the budget committee for their time, their efforts, their questions. Many of our members on the budget committee are longtime members and have been through the challenges of the past and come through until now, and some are newer members. But I do know it takes time to review those things. And so I appreciate the, uh, the high dollar amount that we are paying you to do that for free. So thank you for spending your time. It is part of our process and we do appreciate that. The budget then moves on to the board for our next meeting. And then I want to thank our high school admin team for the work they've been doing around graduation. I know there's been both heartache and celebration in both directions. I will tell you that districts are calling our people now from around to figure out how we're doing it because they're finding out that the plans that they had may or may not work out. And so they've got a two day plan over there. It's going to be a great celebration. Kids are going to be recognized and celebrated and enjoyed and it'll be, it'll be a lot of fun and it'll be great. I just want to thank them. I know it's a huge amount of effort and time to put that in. Catalyst plans are also underway, so we will have a catalyst graduation. Just keep your eye out for one of those 3,000 emails that you get from us with further details on graduation. But just wanted to highlight that and thank them for their work in the middle of everything else they're doing. They're also putting on a great celebration for our seniors as they come in. And that's what I have for you tonight.
Okay, thank you. I know this is, we're approaching one of the best parts about being board members and that's graduation. So always something to look forward to. Okay, next on our agenda, we have our consent agenda. We have a anonymous donation of $350 to our Black Student Union. So thank you always for those donations. And then there was one thing I would like to ask to be changed in a minute, and that's just under number one regular session called a duty. It was actually not Ron who called the meeting to duty unfortunately, but me. So any other thoughts or questions around that? Or are we ready for a motion? I would entertain a motion. By somebody on the board.
I know that the Newburgh School Board approved the, the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion and a second is their discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, let's move into reports and presentations in our monthly financial report with Nikki. Is she here? Where is she?
Okay, great. Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Hopefully it'll hold on for just a minute here. Um, some of this I covered in our budget committee meeting. The first part of my notes here talks about our ending from balance. Um, I added to it a little bit with our budget committee stuff with some grant adjustments and everything. That brings that 11 million dollars up to 12 point something. What do I have it here? At 12.6. Get back to the right screen. And with that, my screen went away. Hold on one second here. I'll get it back. Okay, here we go. So one thing I wanted to point out in a previous meeting, I talked about our money due back for the previous school year. So for 1920, I was budgeting about 500,000 due back. Um, and then they sent out an estimate that said about 476. So I was feeling pretty good about being ahead of the game. And then the final one came out and we actually ended up owing back 578,000 along.
Nikki, you cut out there for a second? Did we lose her? Well, let's give her a second and see if she's able to join us. Did she? I think she just dropped out. Well, we are ahead of schedule, so we can move on to the next point of business and then return and hope Nikki that returns back as the board comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Okay, I think I'm back for a second.
Yeah, so we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. I was trying to get on my phone, but it came back from my computer before. Anyway. So I'll talk fast. So the prior year adjustment came in 100,000 more than the estimate a few weeks before. So that just shows the swing that the fund has and we do that. So between that and what I expect to pay back for the current year, the 479,000, it's about a million dollars. Um, and the next item I put down there was for the capital projects fund. And so in the current year, when we sold the bonds, we put a budget out there, resolution out there. Um, and now it's becoming more fine tuned and working with cornerstone. So next month, I'll probably, I'll bring a resolution forward, moving that around into different categories where I put the majority of the money into the 4,000 fund. Pieces of it need to be in the support function of the 2,000 and fun. So look for that next month. And that's just to put your budget allocation in the correct place. Just based on where they're giving up money at this point with the bond. But I won't review the ending fund balance piece too much, because we talked about it in our last meeting, unless there's some questions around that.
Are there questions for Nikki for the ending fund balance? Nope. Okay, keep going.
Okay, well, that's all I have. If there aren't any questions with this, it's pretty straightforward. We talked about it a bit more in the other meeting, so.
Any other final thoughts or questions for Nikki? Okay, I don't see any. Thanks Nikki. Okay, next up, we'll move on to Greg. If he is available, we're cruising right along here. There he is. I see him. Greg, are you available? We're early.
I am, sorry. I'm at home for the first time and you know, it's a little different setup this way.
All right, go ahead.
Yes, so the calendar is in your packet. We talked about this a couple of times and tried to present it clearly in the packet about the issues that are in place. There's really pros and cons to both draft A and draft B. One option allows us to have the end of the school year be earlier than we originally planned by adding a student contact day, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Uh, if we did that, that would be a one time experience. We would not plan to carry that over into future years. The other option is to keep the same date, ending date that was originally proposed of June 21st. And that would require us to have a non-student day near the end of April. All of this has to do with the fact that I originally missed the amount of school days by leaving out March 31st and not wanting to end on a Monday with a half day for the last day of school. There is not a recommendation on this from the district office, one way or the other, because we see the pros and the cons of each one. And there are different, different opinions as to which is best by different parties that are involved. So we're presenting it to the board for the board to make the decision which way we want to go for next year.
Thank you. Are there questions for Greg?
When do you need us to make a decision on this?
We really need this done when we originally presented it a month ago. So we are really hoping for a decision tonight.
Greg, can you, um, speak at all about who preferred draft A over B? Just to give us a little more insight into maybe what some of the concerns are in each.
I, I think rather than talking about who, who was for which one, just talk about the concerns. It's, it's primarily a a difference of opinion between when, when is it, when is it more detrimental to students? Are more students going to be gone the Wednesday before Thanksgiving because they are used to having those plans? Or are more students going to be sort of checked out by dragging the school year later into June? And I don't think that there is a definitive way to to answer those questions of which is, which is more accurate. But that's, that's the primary difference of opinion on the two calendars.
When I read this is if we take option A, we're adding a day in the middle of the year to people's calendar, one day. But if we take option B, we're adding essentially three days or two days for students. Is that correct? To, at the end of the calendar?
Yeah, I don't understand what, what you're saying about that. There, we're not.
Students would, under A, they'd be done on the 17th of June, but under B, they'd be done on the 21st of June, right?
Correct. Um, those, that's two days because there's a, because there's a weekend in there. And the difference is on one calendar, we're, we're adding a student contact day, which the difference is one calendar adds a day, one calendar subtracts a day from people attending. So that's what makes the two day difference.
Yeah, I, I, I see what you mean because there's that extra day off in the second calendar in April. But I'm just thinking about the impact on the people's calendar overall. It makes the school year two year, two days longer to skip a day in November. Or if we have the day in November, actually it makes the school year five, four days longer on the calendar, five, four days. Is that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, that they can't go do something?
Yes.
Whereas the other one is just one day. I mean, I guess I'm not getting the argument for why this is even a close question. And so somebody needs to educate me.
People are very, some people are very concerned about the loss of learning on that Wednesday by having students not present.
Yeah, I understand that problem. I've dealt with it myself. It's a problem. I'm not sure why we anticipate it to be any less of a problem at the end of June.
Again, that's, that's the difference of opinion and the, the, the reason why we're not necessarily bringing a recommendation at this time. There are arguments that can be made on each side.
Ron, are you interested in making a motion?
No, whenever we're ready. I'm not sure. If other people have questions, let's, I don't have questions.
Hey Greg?
Yep.
What's the, why is it so much longer at the end than it would be in the middle?
Why is it so much longer at the end than it would be in the middle? I, I'm not sure to answer your question other than what I've already said. So I'm just trying to think through the process. So there are 100 and, uh, there are 176.5 student days that we required by contract. On the original calendar, when I missed March 31st, when you add March 31st in, which is in the middle of the week, it would be another student day. So that makes it 177.5 to student days, which is too many for our contract. So the first thing that we have to do then from the original approved contract is we have to figure out where to take out a day. If we just take that day out at the end of the year, then we end up with the last day of school being Monday, June 20th as a half day. And everybody agrees that's not a good solution. That, that doesn't make any sense to do that. So in order to move that day, you either, you either, you either go to school on the first of Wednesday, which then takes away a full day. So it takes away the half Monday day at the end of the year and the half Friday. And that allows us to get off on Friday. Or the way that you do that is you, in essence, take away a student contact day by giving a holiday on the, at the end of April, and that pushes it back from a half day Monday to a half day Tuesday. Does that make sense? I'm just trying different ways to describe the issues and the problems.
No, thank you. Is there any chance of doing a half-day on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving? Teachers probably love that one.
Our contract, the way that our contract works is to have it has language of a half-day on the last day of school, and so it would require doing a memorandum of understanding and and doesn't necessarily gain you anything. You're either gonna you're either going to be there or not there on that Wednesday, most likely, and a half-day kind of is a probably doesn't gain you very much.
But the other part would be if they get the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving, that affects the people that travel, which is quite a few. But at the end of June, it affects everybody. A lot of people don't travel. So a lot of people stay home or stay pretty close by where they wouldn't travel until Wednesday night or Thursday morning, you know, for their family's Thanksgiving. Whereas everybody's impacted at the end of June. I don't know. That's a tough one.
I think my opinion is that June 17th is already so late for school to be going to add add four more days to the end of it. You, those will be wasted days as far as our students are concerned, because they will be completely checked out on that Monday and Tuesday. So I'm going to move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approved draft day of the amended 2122 academic calendar as presented.
One second.
Okay, motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
And and he's approved, he, the motion is for number A?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
The last day of school would be June 17th. There would be school Wednesday prior, and there would not be that school. I'm sorry, there would not be a day off in April.
Right.
Okay. Okay. No further discussion. Let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, passes unanimously. Here we go. We've answered the underlying problem.
Thank you again, and I apologize again to the board and the public for the mistake that's delayed us a month. So I'm glad we have this done, and we will begin work on the calendar for the following year to bring you bring that to you as soon as we're able, so that family and staff can plan.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you for your diligence on this as well. Okay, next up, we have Derek to talk about our 202123 SIA plan.
Thank you. Make sure I'm sharing my screen, everybody here. Okay, everybody see those slides? We see the first slide? Great, thank you. Thanks for the time tonight. My name is Derek Brown. I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning, and I'm going to present to you Newburgh School District's plan for 2123 Student Investment Account, which is part of the Student Success Act. So I'll give you just a couple of quick reminders about the Student Success Act, and then we'll start walking through our plan, which will be showing you the funded positions and the allocation breakdowns, and then talking about next steps. And just to say one quick thing about the question, Brandy, that you raised at the beginning, just to clarify, so the the action that is needed tonight from the board is to review and approve this plan, which, as you said, is the 202123, so it's a two-year plan. And that's different than the conversation we had a couple of weeks ago, where you approved an amendment to the current year's plan, which, thank you again for that, and that was submitted to ODE, and they have accepted it. So thanks for your work on that. So just a couple of quick reminders about the Student Investment Account. Again, designed to meet students' mental and behavioral health needs and help school districts support increasing academic achievement and reducing academic disparities for students who have been traditionally underserved, students of color, students with disabilities, English learners, and so on. Our plan from the beginning has been organized around kind of three primary buckets. Mental and behavioral health supports and safety, academic instruction and intervention, and then other academic supports. And that's true of our 202123 plan as well, as you will see. The state waived all of the evaluative measurements for the first year of SIA, which ended up being this year as a result of the pandemic. But in the years to come, we will be reporting out on yearly measurable items to help us understand how these resources are helping us support students in the ways that we've described before. So the three, the primary outcomes that we're looking for are increasing supports for students in terms of mental and behavioral health needs, increase increasing student growth and achievement in the core content areas, and then, of course, increasing graduation rates. The 2123, 202123 allocations for Newburgh School District are on the slide in front of you right now. For next year, it's 3,151,853 dollars. And then you can see in 202223, it's just a little bit more than that. It's about 130,000 more dollars. So the next two years of allocations are pretty similar for us. And I do want to say here that there's always the possibility that ODE will find additional money. We've heard anecdotally that the state is in better economic condition than had been previously predicted, and that could turn out to be increases in terms of allocations in SIA and probably other funding streams as well. So it's possible that either for next year or for 2223, if we end up finding out that our allocation has increased, we would come back to you with the plan to engage with you about how we might utilize those additional resources. But for now, these are the allocations that we're preparing for. In terms of next year, the slide shows you the positions that we would like to fund with next year's allotment. Some of these are already filled and have been part of this year's SIA plan. So I'll just briefly kind of walk through these with you. The licensed therapists, as a reminder, that's a partnership with Lutheran Community Services. This year, we had four, and so next year, we're working with them to bring in five licensed therapists, be working in our schools, four at the elementary level, one at secondary. We have our special education and behavioral health coordinator position, which is currently filled. So that will continue next year. The drug and alcohol counselor, you might remember from my last presentation, we had built that into last year's plan. That's a partnership with Yanhill County, and there was some difficulty in finding the right person and getting the position filled. So in the amended plan for this year, we removed it. We've added it back in for the 2021 through 2023 plan. Counselors, this year's plan has 2.5 counselors, and we just with the principals and working with staff, knew that we needed to make a slight increase in that area to help provide a little bit more coverage in a couple of our schools. So we're increasing from 2.5 to three. We've hired, pardon me, a math tosa, who has been working with us since February, and that position will continue to be funded in SIA in the years to come, helping with math curriculum adoption, instructional strategies and training and so on. So working a lot in our buildings. We have three ELD teachers that are built into this plan, working at various levels. Something that is new to this particular plan is starting to add back reading specialists. So you can see we have 5.0 FTE reading specialists. Four of those would be at the elementary level and one at the middle level. Our hope is to continue to grow that particular area out until we get to the point where we have one FTE in each school, but this will be a big step forward. And then identified by administrators and teachers and others as a need for sure. We have, and by the way, that's I wanted to mention also the slideshow that I sent or that Jennifer Nelson sent you ahead of time. There was a typo in that where it said 4.0 for reading specialists. So this one that is in front of you right now is corrected, and that's 5.0. We have 5.0 educational assistance, again, working at various levels. Those are all to support sped services. We have the at-risk student support. That's a 0.5 FTE that's working with students who over over a catalyst and has been a really big help in terms of helping those kids get across the finish line and graduate. We have a 0.6 speech-language pathologist working at the elementary level. That was part of this year's plan as well. We have a bilingual help desk technician. That was part of this year's plan. That position has been filled and has proven to be a really important part of our overall kind of service package, if you will, providing support to Spanish-speaking families. Especially in a year like this, when we're leaning so heavily on technology. And then a federal systems coordinator, that's going to be a person who is helping to oversee our ELD work, migrant, homeless, and title grant programs and things like that. This is going to be a really critical position for us to consolidate some of those really key activities, especially as we move into next year, where we are going to be working really hard to make some big changes to our ELD service delivery and going to more of a co-teaching model than the model that we've been using for previous years. This person will be actively involved in that work and working in buildings as well as coordinating with staff at the district office. So those are the positions that we have proposed in our plan for next year. In terms of how that breaks down across those buckets, in terms of funding, you can see here that 45% of those dollars end up going to academic instruction and interventions. That's about 1.4 million dollars. Another 30% goes into that bucket of mental behavioral health supports at $931,000. And then about a quarter or $803,000 goes into the other classroom supports category. This table just gives you a really quick breakdown of of this, how these dollars are invested in across our different groups. So you can see that out of that 3.1 million, about 1.9 million ends up being invested in our licensed staff. That's about 61% of the budget. The overall FTE that were that is built into this plan is 27.1 and 14.1 of that would be licensed, which is about 52%. Classified 630,000, that's about 20% of the budget in terms of administration, 343,000, which represents about 11% of the budget. And then the professional services would be would be those five licensed therapists that are in partnership with Lutheran Community Service, and that's about 8%. So you can see the dollars and how they break down across our different groups, and then you can see the overall FTE and how those FTE break down across our groups as well. There we go. There we go. And then another table, just to show you how these dollars that are invested across our grade bands. So based on our current enrollment, which I know is a, this is a little bit of an odd year to be talking about where anybody is with enrollment. You can see at the elementary level, elementary represents about 42% of our total enrollment right now. Middle school, about 25% and high school. Pardon me, 24% and high school, 34. And then you can see the total percentage of the total budget at each of those level, elementary, 59% and 60% of the FTE, middle level, 21%, and 20% of the FTE, high school, 20% and 20% of the FTE. So in terms of next steps, and you've all been through this process a couple of times, because we've amended our plan from last year, it is built into the law around the Student Success Act that local school boards approve plans. And then once that has taken place, we submit these documents to the Department of Education. My apologies for that. This year, they are required to be submitted by June 30th, which is just coming up right around the corner. Upon approval, then they present a grant agreement, and then that would come back to you again for review and approval. And then we sign the formal agreement and move forward. We can amend these plans at any time. As you know, we've amended ours a couple of times to deal with any unexpected changes and so on. So again, as I mentioned, if we were to, if we were to find out a couple of weeks, our allocation has been increased, we would put together a proposal for you and bring that back to you, and anytime we make a change, we'll be back to discuss those things with you. So I will pause there and take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Derek. Does the board have questions?
Derek, this all comes from the SIA. Going back here. This I fund, it all comes from that, right?
That's true, yes.
So after these two years, then what would happen to these folks if they don't approve enough money?
Yeah, well, it's built into state law, so we feel, you know, that's a little, a little safer than other grants that you might be funding positions out of. But I completely agree, I think, with where that question is coming from. Anytime you're funding positions out of grants, you have to be really careful and be able to see pretty far ahead. Because this one is built into state law, we we don't anticipate that it's going anywhere anytime soon, especially if the state's economic recovery continues to go the direction it's going. If we get into a position where the state starts telling us you're going to get significant reductions, or maybe there's proposal to remove it from legislation, we would have, I'm sure, at least a couple of years to figure out how to sustain the positions that we have listed or have a plan in place for how to transition things.
I want to say thank you for putting these plans together first. I know a lot of work went into this, and when I saw your slide around where the staffing was going to be as far as the positions and how many that reading specialist is really a bit of a trigger back to 2018. I remember being a new board member, just joining the board, having a son who had just been diagnosed with dyslexia and receiving those reading specialist pull-out services, and then having to come to the budget meeting to vote and say, we're cutting these. And so when I see that, I see that you know, reading specialist, EA's therapist, these are going to be people having direct contact with students, and it's one more professional looking out for our kids and one more professional that our kids can connect with that could make the difference, right? There's just one more set of eyes on these kids that need a little extra support, and I'm incredibly thankful that these funds are available and that we have a comprehensive plan that targeting specifically supporting students where they need it. So thank you.
Just wanted to respond to that really quickly to say, you know, I came to the district at a time when that previous instructional facilitator structure was, we were starting to have hard conversations about that because there were some realizations about the budget. And those folks were also funded a little bit out of some grant dollars. So going back to Dave's point, some of the funding there was from a grant that we knew had a termination date. And so again, I think SIA, because it's built into state law, has a different kind of, gives me a different level of confidence. Doesn't mean that there can't be reductions. We've seen that, and it doesn't mean that things are going to last forever, but having worked at the state myself, I just know that there's a different degree of confidence that we can apply to it. And the instructional facilitators you mentioned are a good example of how things can can go sideways pretty quick if you don't have a good plan, a good sustainment plan with other typical grants.
Any other thoughts or questions for Derek? Just mute it myself. I would entertain a motion. Again, from a board member.
I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve the 202123 SIA plan and budget as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, all those opposed? And abstaining? Okay, so it passes six to one with Director Brown abstaining. Thank you, Derek.
Thanks very much for your time tonight.
Okay, so we have a break scheduled, but I am feeling like we're only 45 minutes, and is everyone comfortable with continuing on? Okay, awesome. We'll keep going then. So next up, we have Greg to talk about approving the no charge on our construction excise tax.
Yes, so this is something that has come up as a process of working through our bond. Yes, so this is something that has come up as a process of working through our bond. Just to give the background, the construction excise tax is something that's built into state law. It's a tax on new construction that was a funding source for districts to be able to use for capital improvements and maintenance. And this was created because there's no funding mechanism in our our state for buildings at all. So this is kind of a small way to be able to to bring that into districts. And nonprofits have the ability to request an exemption from the construction excise tasks, tax. And there have been several times in the past where our board has approved that for various nonprofits within our district. And so with us having several construction projects as part of the construction bond that we passed in November twenty twenty, it makes sense for the district not to charge itself a construction excise task that tax that we would just turn around to put into the building. And so Cornerstone Management Group, which is the district's owner's representative, has recommended that the board take action to exempt all of our Brawn projects, remodels, construction in any core, in any way from that construction excise tax. And we're able to do that by state law, like because we are a nonprofit as well. So this is one of those mechanisms just to keep us from having to tax ourselves in order to pay it in a different way.
I move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors exempt all school construction bond projects from the construction excise tax.
I second.
Okay, with a motion and then a second, is there further discussion? You did a great job explaining it, Greg, thank you. All right, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you, Greg. Okay, next we have Shiloh is, yeah, I see he's here, hopefully he's available. Perfect, there you are. Thank you, Shiloh. Go ahead.
All right, so we are asking for board resolution to the Fund Two Hundred for food service for seventy thousand five hundred dollars. And this is under Function Three Thousand Object Five Hundred, which is a capital expense. And the reason behind this is we are noticing that our summer food program is taking off and we are in need of a food service vehicle. And last year, and I just kind of wanted to give a little background, last year, we kind of went backwards, March and April, we lost a lot of participation. We, I think we ended la- the last year like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the red. But what we saw is adjusting our food program. We started to see the participation increasing in April and May, and we were making some really good groundwork. And we knew it was going to continue over summer, so we had a lot of waivers to extend out to different parts of the community that we haven't been able to serve before, which was like Dundee, Shaheenland Valley Middle School, out by Mabel Rush, or hitting all aspects of Newburgh. A typical summer feeding revenue is about seventy-eight thousand. Last summer, we did two hundred and two thousand. So we really upped the game on that, we had a lot of participation. And as this year, we really capitalize on the everybody eating for free and launching Uber Eats the start of the year before kids started coming back. And we've made some tremendous progress. So right now, we are at a five hundred thousand positive in our food service budget. We've been able to put in, get new dishwashers, but we are seeing a need to have some better transportation with a lot of volume because we are anticipating an even bigger summer, especially with summer, summer school coming back. So if you take a, imagine last year without summer school. I mean, there's a lot of students, about four hundred fifty-some students of summer school that we're missing that we usually feed. So we're looking at probably about two hundred eighty thousand dollars in revenue for this summer. So we found a vehicle that, looking at the longevity of the program, is a vehicle for storage, but also has a cooler in it. I think this is a very good investment because things do happen. Where a cooler does go down at a school, we can park it out outside, transfer all the food over. So kind of eliminates the food safety for us in panic and scramble mode. So I think this would be a good investment for us to make kind of moving forward. So anybody have any questions?
Hey Shaw, when you talk about the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar revenues, that from the state?
Federal, so USDA, so.
Good, thank you.
What is the cost of the vehicle that you're looking at purchasing?
Sorry, say that again?
What's the cost of the vehicle that you're looking to purchase?
Um, it is seventy thousand three hundred dollars, so I think we just did seventy thousand five hundred.
And is that new or is it used?
New, so Nikki and I have been doing some work. The commercial fleet in transits, all that makes Ford Dodge. The supply and demand is really rough right now. So we were looking at, we budgeted in the budget for next year and talking to all of the purveyors, if we ordered a vehicle, we wouldn't get it till next April right now. So the, I I just, I stumbled upon it at the Newburgh Ford. We know that they are selling before they're even getting the lot right now for restaurants and other schools. So and last year, Larry Hampton and their crew, they scrambled together and rearranged their work. And we were using a huge box truck and all these different different vehicles just to make summer food happen next year, or last year, sorry.
So Shaw, Newburgh Ford would get that that sale then?
Yep.
Cool.
And then they are giving us government pricing for that.
Okay, any other questions for Shiloh? I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Newburgh School Board of Directors adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty Oh Seven, the Resolution of the Board of Directors of Newburgh School District, Twenty Nine J Additional Appropriations for the Twenty 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 One Physical Year in Nutrition Service Fund by Title Only. I second it.
Okay, motion in a second, is there further discussion? It bothers two of you, but you can only vote once. It's okay. Okay, with a motion in a second, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Shiloh. I will say, I remember last summer seeing meals getting loaded into the back of like Subarus and Toyotas and just people's vehicles, so this is great, I hope it helps.
Been a crazy journey.
Okay, so next up, we have Nikki back again to talk about our, a resolution accepting the awesome grant.
Okay, this is really a formality. I brought the the contract to you last month, but they wanted specific language around a resolution allowing us to accept the contract. So you have actually basically done this once, but we need to do it one more time to be sure we say the exact right thing to receive the awesome grant. So are there any questions?
Nope, seems like a small price to pay for free money, so thank you for bringing it up to our attention. And would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll recommend, I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty Oh Eight, a resolution of the Board of Directors of Newburgh School District Twenty Nine J, accepting the OSCIM Grant Award and authorizing approval of the grant agreement by title only.
I second it.
Okay, the motion and second, is there discussion? Okay, see none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you, Nikki. All right, next up is Dave. We're we're an hour early, Dave, but I feel like you're probably ready.
Oh, good job on that.
Yeah.
Well, I talked to Brandy a while back about about the our local police department. And so she asked me to type it all up and and Brandy, thanks for cleaning this thing all up the way you did. So I'll go ahead and read it right now. It's a Newburgh Dundee Police Department appreciation. Whereas the Newburgh School Board would like to acknowledge and say thank you to the Newburgh Dundee Police Department. And whereas our Newburgh Dundee Police Department is rated as one of the very best police departments in the state of Oregon. And whereas Chief Cosmic has continued to lead an exemplary effort to provide all of our residents, children of our Newburgh Dundee Schools, parents, community members, business owners, and all visitors a safe place to live, do business and to visit. And whereas doing all this while dealing with a worldwide pandemic and political upheaval across our United States of America. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors says thank you to Chief Cosmic and every officer and support personnel and their department for all their dedication and hard work serving the communities of Newburgh and Dundee.
Thank you, Dave. So this is a first reading, so we're not making any motions this evening, but are there any questions for Dave?
A point where we can move to amend it, can't we not?
We can.
I move to amend the resolution to add a sentence after the last sentence in the fifth paragraph to read. We urge the Newburgh City Council to preserve funding of the Newburgh Police Department.
I have a question. While I have been working with the police department and I think they're doing a great job. I've called them myself for support. I'm wondering what exactly this has to do with our governance responsibility as a board?
Well, I would, I would answer that by saying we've done many different you know, different appreciations, resolutions for many different things. And at this time, you know, they've had you know, it's not like we have an average police department, we have an outstanding one. And you know, I thi- I think at this time with all the happened in our world right now, that you know, Newburgs and Dundee are not immune from any of that. And recognizing, you know, great work, just like we're doing with our staff or classified or or licensed, it's kind of the same thing.
Right, I mean, I don't disagree with you that we have an outstanding department. My question is more around, I know that the that they're hiring right now. So the department's hiring for permanent chief. So would this fault, like, is this even legal for us to sort of put a statement? Is it sort of like us endorsing Chief Cosmic? Like, I I'm not sure.
I have some similar concerns because I feel like this, as a publicly elected official, I certainly don't want there to ever be a perception that I am pressuring a city employee in a hiring decision. That's one of my main concerns with this. The other is that there's somebody's name in it specifically, which is not something that we generally do. So would this be something that we redo every year, something that we have to redo every time there's a new police chief? That's sort of a logistic question. So the first is a concern is, as a public official, I'm pressuring a city employee in a hiring decision. And the second is more of a logistical procedure of, do we just continually revisit this? Or do we take out an individual's name and make it more general?
I have a, I have a question for you, I think, Dave. Why is this happening now?
I think it's I don't know, I've thought about it ever since we've been on the board, you know, Ron, I think it's one of those things where you know, as a board, we've kind of gone through the, all the steps with from last year to now. I mean, we've done resolutions in support of lots of different things. I think this is just, you know, we can take out like an individual's name, like what Brandy said. And I'm not sure I agree with, you know, adding anything to it. I think it was just more of a general statement from one public agency to another, just saying, you know, thank you and good job. So.
Have we, have we done this for any other organization in the city? I would, I know we've done it for the teachers and for the because the classified, because they are our employees. But this is something I would say, I I recognize the police department and and the good, the great work they've done. But I don't feel that this has anything to do with improving education, increasing safety and increasing student achievement, which is our our goals or our our core values.
Yeah, I was excited when you said you wanted to to have a proclamation, you know, recognizing the police. I thought it was going to be more talking about, you know, specifics about what Newburgh School District and the police have done together. Because there is a longstanding, you know, relationship there, you know, if we're going to call out an individual, you know, I would have called out Officer Moreland, you know, Jeff Cosmic. A wonderful person and a good police officer, but I don't know if he ever shaved his head to raise twenty-five hundred dollars for, you know, our schools. So I think there's some things we could do to to make this very, much more school district specific rather than just a general department statement. I'd I'd really like to see us recognize the the partnerships that we've had. You know, we have not had in Newburgh the contentious discussions over school resource officers because we use our school resource officers in a way that is much more collaborative. And I'd like to see us recognize that sort of partnership rather than just a generic department-wide statement.
And Dave, I asked the question about the timing because I think you're putting Jeff Cosmic in a bad spot. This kind of reminds me of when the former union head came, talked to us, tried to get us to hire Dave Parker on the spot for a permanent position. They had more right to do that, give us that suggestion, than we have to make any implication about a hiring decision at the at the police, Newburgh City Police Department. And doing it right now would be very hard to avoid the impression that we're pressuring or favoring Jeff Cosmic. I've known Jessica Cosmic since he was a student in my state and local government class. I don't know, twenty years ago, longer maybe, probably longer. I remember him very well, I enjoyed having him in class, I think he's a great guy. There's, I have nothing against Jeff Cosmic, but I would not want to saddle him with a controversial semi endorsement from an outside group. That's just not going to set well. They do not have to listen to us when they make their decisions, and I don't think we should be timing this right now. If it has anything to do that might reflect on Jeff Cosmic and his and his and his candidacy, I don't live in Newburgh, otherwise I'd be down there supporting him for being appointed as a citizen of Newburgh. But since I live in Dundee, I don't have any business making that argument. But and I don't think we as a district should be doing anything to give it that impression.
You realize they are the Newburgh Dundee Police Department though, right?
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, thank you. I know I can go bug him. I forgot about that. Thank you. But as a person, I, as an individual, I could do that because I think so highly of Jeff. But I think it's still inappropriate and puts him in a bad spot if we do it.
Well, once again, we'll always come to loggerheads and agree or disagree, so.
So point of order, I I move to amend, is the chairperson going to call for seconds on that?
Is there a second?
I guess I'll second my own motion or reading or something, I don't know.
The second, it's the second to my motion, Dave. Please fund it.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, with a motion and a second, is there discussion?
Yeah, just to be clear, I wasn't at loggerheads with you.
I'm just, guys, I was just trying to support another, you know, agency around town who's had a hell of a year. I mean, they've had a tough year and this, just like we've had, you know, and it's like, we we do this for the fire department, we do it for the city council, you know, I mean, we we have the parking wreck and we have all kinds of different government agencies around town. So, you know, everybody's had to go through a tough time. I didn't have any special timing on this thing to, you know, it's just like we have so much stuff we do and we have other stuff like the bond that was, you know, tried to bring this in after that, feel like the bond's kind of moving, you know, right along, so there was no magic timing on this thing other than just to support, you know, the police department, I do the same thing. I do the same thing for the, the fire department or whoever else is out there. So I just think they've done a great job. And anything to encourage them would be great. I mean, all the police officers I know within our community and without, probably had their most challenging year ever. And you know, I know, I know Officer Morning is a good friend of mine, but he will tell you that, you know, officers look at it like as a, as a team project. Cause whenever we do a lot of things at the, at the high school or whatever school we go to, you know, they have most of their staff down there. So he gets a lot of support from the whole department. It's not just one officer. And they look at it as a team thing, kind of like we do, so.
So we've got the motion in a second to add language around. Brian, could you state it one more time, please?
We urge the Newburgh City Council to preserve funding of the Newburgh Dundee Police Department. Say about that is, you know, there is this, you know, very vocal movement to defund our police departments in America. And I think it is a very dangerous idea. Very poorly thought out. And, you know, that is being discussed at the city level as far as I'm aware. And I think it will be detrimental to our community if that happens. So this is a good opportunity to voice our support for proper funding of public safety in our community. And I would, aside from my amendment, I would suggest that if people, what people are having difficulty with is the naming of Chief Cosmic, they are more than welcome to suggest their own amendments to the resolution to remove that stumbling block to their supporting it.
So Brian, I'm not familiar with the city budget process. I know they're in it right now, just like we are. Do you know, are they looking to cut? And if so, how much?
I don't have the specifics of their, their budget.
Do you know if they're looking to cut the police budget?
I know there are some counselors who are supportive of that idea, yes.
But we don't know, we don't have any information about the budget committee's actual budget and if they're planning to cut funding for the police or not.
Well, we would, with my amendment, we would be suggesting that they not do that regardless of what is currently happening in their committees.
No, sure. But you just mentioned that it may, in your statement, it sounded as if you had some information that they were looking to cut. I just wanted to clarify that that's not accurate, that you're, you, what you're proposing is saying, yes, please don't cut, but we don't know that they actually are. Okay. So there's a motion, a second. Any further discussion on that one specifically?
Just on the amendment, right?
Yes, just on the amendment. Okay. So all is in favor of adding that language. Please raise your hand. Okay. All those opposed? And abstaining. Okay. So Director Woodruff abstained. Director Shannon and Brown voted in favor. And Directors Penya Mock, Penner and Pyros voted against, so the motion fails. Okay. So now we're back to the original language. Would anybody like to make recommendations for editing or how they'd like to proceed?
I'd make a motion to, you know, if we need to, if it makes it more powerful to, you know, to drop a specific name, I understand, you know, your thoughts on that. So, you know, we could easily, you know, leave Chief Cosmic out of that and just say, you know, just drop that.
Are you, Dave, are you suggesting striking the third paragraph or do you, to reword it? Or how would you like to, to proceed with that?
I'm looking at it. Trying to pull it back up here. Sorry, Brandy.
That's okay. Take your time.
It's happening. Hold on. Slow. I just think, well, you know, what you said about that, if you want, taking out that specific name or anything in there would be, I, I understand if that, that makes people feel uncomfortable. I'm almost there. Sorry.
All right.
I guess it says, you know, saying Chief Cosmic, you know, like we'd say to police, the, the Newburgh Dundee Police have continued, you know, to have an exemplary effort to provide, you know, from right there. So we could, we could strike that, you know, to say Newburgh Dundee Police, you know, have continued an exemplary and just take out the word lead or Chief Cosmic out of there.
They have to stay as a motion, Dave.
I'll make a motion that we strike Chief Cosmic and then the word lead out of that first sentence in the third paragraph.
And, and, and are you suggesting introducing, saying instead of Chief Cosmic, the Newburgh Police, excuse me, the Newburgh Police Department continues to lead in an exemplary effort? Is that what you, or continues to, continues an exemplary effort?
Yes.
What you're saying, Newburgh Police Department is continues an exemplary effort. What about the other paragraph? Shoot, this thing just, there's one down. He's, he's in the next, last paragraph too. Says thank you to the, to the police department and all its officers?
Yeah, that's how I would do it. So in paragraph five, we just delete Chief Cosmic and replace it with Newburgh Dundee Police.
Thank you to, to Dubre, Dundee Police Department and all its officers. I like the fact that you mentioned all the officers. I mean, I think that's a strength.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of people behind the scenes, just like in schools that, you know, they don't, they do a lot.
So is that your motion then, Dave?
Yes.
You're saying, okay, motion and second. Is there discussion?
I'm a little, I'm not, I, I think we have the option of doing this. I don't know. I can't remember. I didn't go back and look. I can't remember any time when we singled out another agency of government for a, a motion of appreciation. I think it's okay, especially if we're not visibly interfering or meddling in a personnel decision of theirs. And this probably helps avoid that issue. But I'm not sure that, I don't know. I, I don't think I understand the principle, the limiting principle. Maybe it's just our time so that we're not going around thanking everybody for all the things they do becomes kind of meaningless if that's what we feel like we have to do. So I'm, I'm not entirely easy about this because I'm not sure why this one and not others.
I agree. I would think, you know, that the Providence healthcare system who's, who's done so much during the pandemic, the, the fire department during the, the, the fires here, you know, we've, i- i- it's really, I wonder if it's, if it's really our role to do this and, and to what purpose. And also if, if what the public feels about this, I would like to hear public comments about this.
Well, yeah, because, because this was a first read, I, I would want to see if we get public comment next time. You know, if folks want us to go ahead and do this proclamation or not. Yeah. And today is a difficult day. So a year ago, George Floyd got murdered. So I don't think that it's even appropriate today.
Why is it not?
Well, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. So let's, let's go ahead and, and take care of that. And then we can continue discussion if we want or, or make additional edits. Or in, thank you Director Penya. Yes, it is a first read, so we, we don't need to. I would suggest we don't do an adoption on this so that we can't get more community input. But is everyone comfortable voting right now on, on the motion that Director Brown put forward?
Which is an amended motion, a motion to amend it, right?
Yes, motion to amend it and strike the specific name of Chief Cosmic.
And then those other, those other words that we put in, yeah. I'm, I'm comfortable voting on the amendment. I would, I'll talk later about whether to delay or not.
Okay. So all those in favor of Director Brown's amendment to change the language, please raise your hand. Okay. All those opposed? And abstaining. Okay. Directors Woodruff and Penya abstained. The rest were in favor, so that passes. Okay. Let's see. Ron, would you like to share your thoughts?
Yeah, I think, I, I think, cause I'd like to have, it's just me needing more time to think. I, I'd like to have more time to think about how I can, how I can understand a limiting principle on doing this outside our own organization. All the ones I can remember, and I might be forgetting some, have been about our own people or the people working in our own school district. And that's our job to recognize those people. If, maybe there have been other examples, but I was worried about it being timed during the search. And, and I confess, I did not think about the timing related to George Floyd's death. Those are a separate, those are additional issues, but I would appreciate a courtesy to let me think about this. And if then in the meantime, we get some public feedback, that could be very helpful.
I'm, I'm hearing these comments about George Floyd. Can somebody explain to me what this has to do with George Floyd?
It's just, again, the possibility of public perception. That's what I was worried about in endorsing Cosmic. I'm worried about it here. We can't control what people think, how they react. And doing that on the anniversary of that could have unintended consequences. And I'm just going to avoid that since there doesn't seem to be any reason to be rushing.
I also, I, I agree with you, Ron. I think I need more time to think about this. And I also want to take into consideration what Bob mentioned too of maybe adding language that specifically ties the relationship of the police department and the school district. You know, maybe we're mentioning our partnership, maybe we're mentioning the work of the SRO, whatever that could be. I think it, it would make more sense to me if there was some connection to the partnership aspect of our, our work with the police department and bringing it back to education. So if we have additional, I guess, how would the board like to proceed on this? I think, I think it's prudent to wait and let it sink in, let board members process it. If we have suggestions to edits or whatever board members think in the next two weeks, I would encourage us all to bring those ready because, you know, just so we're prepared for it on the next agenda. Is the board comfortable with that?
I have all of our meeting notes going back years, not, maybe not all the way to 2012, but years. And I'll do a scan and see if I find other examples. So I can, that'll help me with my little project. Thank you for having given that time.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Okay. Well, thank you Director Brown for taking the time to pull this together and, and get this language to us. Okay. So next up, we have our Willamette ESD election. So just for everybody watching at home, the Willamette Education Service District is one of the umbrella organizations over school districts in the, the region. And they also have a board of directors. So this, there's only one candidate, Linda K Reeves, and she would be representing an area that does encompass Newburgh. So that is why we as a school board have the option to, to vote to vote her into that position on the WSD. So are there any questions or application materials all in here? Hopefully everybody had a chance to, to look it over.
What school is she from, Brandy, or district?
Um, I don't know that she's actually, she's worked in Lake Oswego and she worked in North Marion. Right now she's, and then she also lists herself as a retired school administrator. She's served on the Woodburn School District, the Willamette ESD and the Woodburn Arts Center boards. So I think it looks like, it looks as if she's retired and now serves on boards, Woodburn School District and the ESD.
Do you know her?
No, I'm just reading the material.
Yeah, I don't know her either.
Not sure Rebecca, have you had the chance to meet her?
No, no, I didn't.
Those retired people are a little crazy, so.
You're gonna watch them shifty. No.
Well, I'll say I don't really have a sense at all, you know, what her stance is or what her approach is. But with just one candidate, it's kind of a pro forma thing anyway, so.
If we don't vote for her, does that hurt? And we don't vote, does that hurt anything?
I'm, I don't think so. I think it would probably be something similar. I'm imagining to like the OSBA Board of Directors. You know, you, every district has the opportunity to, but if one or two or a few don't, then I guess it's just whoever does gets the say, like a regular election, right?
Yeah, I, since I know nothing about her, I'm not, I don't know what to do. I'll, I'll, I'm not gonna stop us from voting for her, but I wouldn't, it would just be, I would just say, I don't know, I'm not gonna vote.
Brandy, are they gonna, what's the date that they make this announcement or the?
They, we have to get the, the ballot to them no later than June 1st, so a week. And obviously we're not meeting again before June 1st, which is why it popped up on this agenda. It's not something we've regularly done, but it is something that popped up. So I felt like it was prudent to bring it before the board.
I think I agree with Ron. I don't feel like I have enough information to make an informed decision. I would pass on it.
I would entertain a motion, but if there's no motion, then we'll continue. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on. Best to Linda. I hope it works out. All right. Last up, we, and well, actually let me stop. This is about the time we were going to take a break. Does anybody need a break?
I need a break.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Let's take a break until eight thirty and come back. Ron, you're looking so like pensively out the window, I thought that it was your, um, you're like your screen picture, cause you were just totally still. Oh, you're muted.
I'm, I'm upstairs in our house in, in Dundee, and I can see out, I don't, I'm way up, but I just see over the treetops into the valley. This is very pretty, so.
Yeah.
That's why I'm looking out the window more, more than at all you guys.
What? The clouds are really dramatic tonight, I just looked out and they're very.
Yeah, you have a dramatic view, yours is. Has a more, has a more local, almost, what am I gonna say, almost not intimate, but you know. Small scale, cause it's, you can see a quarter of a mile or whatever it is. I can see thirty miles here, so. Yeah, it's different. But with the sun going down and everything being pink, it's gone, it's past its prime now, but I was distracted some of the time.
It's a good thing to be distracted by a sunset, right?
Yeah. So I like the board meetings in the May and June, because. It's light out, even pretty late in the board meeting, we have a chance of being done before it gets dark, and so I can see the whole thing, otherwise. I'm kind of on a stage for the whole neighborhood, cause I have to turn on a lot of lights and. They can watch me if they want, I don't think anybody wants to, so it's not a problem.
Open your window and have like a live performance.
Sure. Like.
All right, everybody come back, it's eight thirty, Rebecca, Brian, Inez, see your beautiful faces. Oh, there's one, got one. All right, eight thirty, we're gonna get started again, good, there's Inez, hopefully Rebecca will join us here in a second. So, last uh agenda item on our meeting tonight is policies, we have quite a few, um. I don't know, Ron, do you wanna kind of explain the process of the committee on this?
Sure, well, yeah, so we've been plugging away, week, month by month, at the policies, uh, we went through the FGNI sections. Uh, well, most of that quite a while ago, I mean, several months ago, um, the, we, we've actually slowed our pace since Spencer. Uh, Lewis joined us, uh, cause he likes to help us think through things, and so. That's not been all good, because it means we have a lot left to do, so. These all got done a while ago, and, but there have been several things on hold, some of them are still on hold, uh, because, uh, Joe and the staff. Wanted to look at them in terms of actual practice, and what would be best in terms of whether to. Uh, change the wording or keep them, so all the ones that are on hold, I think, at least as of the day that the, these were put together. Were still on hold, um, and that means the policy committee is planning to look at them. When Joe and the staff have had to go over them. The other ones are all ones that the policy committee has looked at, and the language has modified, is the language that we approved at the committee level. And so you're invited to read all those, uh, and if you want to, and. If you have questions, you, if you have questions tonight, we can handle them, this is a first read, so with the decision. It, I guess what will probably happen is they'll go into the. Consent agenda, and if there are individual ones that you want to pull out of the consent agenda, we could do that, talk about them and deal with them separately. But otherwise, all the ones that are sort of routine, that don't get much attention, we can, we don't have to deal with them individually that way. And we can deal with them all at once, the only ones that will go in the dissent, the dissent agenda, do we have a dissent agenda, maybe we do have a consent agenda, is um. Is the ones that are not on hold, obviously, the ones on hold still have to be finally looked at by the committee. There will be more coming, cause we are now plugging through J. Uh, and that's almost to the end, the K is the end, I think, and uh, J is still long, so we're not done with J. Uh, we have an extra meeting scheduled tomorrow, no, it's Thursday, and we're gonna meet every week for the next couple of weeks to try to get, so we don't have. Leaving undone laundry for the new board. Um, obviously, if they don't like something we do, they can fix it, but uh, we wanted to get it all done, so the routine stuff's out of the way anyway. And that's our, that's our goal, and uh, so. Um. So, yeah, our goal would be get it to the board, whether the board acts on it now or later is that their decision. So I guess right now, if anybody has particular questions about any of the ones that we've, we're submitting here, this would be fine, we can deal with some of those. Otherwise, uh, this is basically to alert you that, uh, the decision probably would be. At, at, at the earliest, the next board meeting, when they come up in the consent agenda, these ones here.
So, may I ask if these were worked on a while ago, and they were not brought forward because things were on hold? And things are still on hold.
Yeah.
Why is it the meeting after the election they're suddenly brought forward in such volumous fashion?
Well, of course, we're trying to cheat you, Brian, that's obvious.
I, it seems like you're trying to cheat the future board.
No, cause as I just said, these things, we're trying to get them to the board, and it's up to the board to decide when, what they would do with them, and obviously, a future board can undo anything we've already done at any time at once. I'm really, the real purpose for this, Brian, was to not leave undone, undone work to people who'd have to start fresh, it'd be new members of the policy committee. And uh, that would slow everything down. They were on hold, uh, because we thought we might be able to get them done before now, but they're, they're not done yet, so I thought it would be, we thought it would be kinder to the new board. To at least bring them forward now, so that they can, so they're not undone, and everybody have to start from scratch with them after the new board.
Why would they have to start from scratch?
Start from scratches in terms of dealing with policy, so uh. You know, the process of dealing with policy, how the whole policies work and all that stuff, and uh, yeah, so.
We also.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, we also have a, a contract with OSBA to help us with this process, and that cannot just go on forever, there, there's a set amount of time, and they've been very. Um, flexible with us because of COVID, and you know, there was some meetings that we had to skip in the beginning, and there's um, some meetings that, you know, like Ron said, we're gonna have two this month to try to catch up. And so it, it is partially because of that contract as well, and the fact that we want to wrap this up, we recognize there's going to be another policy committee. And we've been working away as a team of Ron, Rebecca, and I, and that will be changing, which is great, to have another set of eyes on these things. Um, but this is something that we started, that we would like to not leave undone for the next committee.
And we also have Ron's um institutional and um. He, his knowledge of, of the, the policies that we don't wanna lose with what we've done on the, what work we've already done.
Would the work you've already done vanish into thin air if we didn't pass these before the next board takes its seat?
No, but it would be one less person that could say, this is why the committee did this, because he wouldn't be here to explain the work.
I have Ron still.
I guess, Brian, my question for you is, why is it more efficient to hold them all back? And rather than pass them, or at least they'll consider passing them. And then, it, then, uh, new board, if they didn't like individual parts, they could deal with the individual parts, most of these are very routine and probably have no, no uh controversy in them. If you, you, again, have suspected foul motives without evidence, when good motives explain everything we were trying to do.
Well, I appreciate your good meta motives, but speaking as a member of the future board, I would just as soon leave it to them to continue this good work. And I'm sorry, you must think we're pretty stupid, that the meeting after an election, when you've, by your own admission. Had these done for months, suddenly we get five hundred and ten pages of policies dumped.
I don't think you're stupid, I think you are suspicious and divisive. And in this case, we were trying to do the right thing by not leaving undone, undone work for a new board. If you or anybody wants us to stop, that's fine with me, cause I don't really need to spend the time working on these.
This is again for information. Are there any questions, concerns, specific to the actual policies?
I guess, I, for me, I was like, uh. You know, Ron, uh. You know, appreciate all the time, you know, the policy stuff is slow, um. Since it's first read, could you maybe, uh. For me, it'd be helpful just to kind of go through, like when I was looking through them, I saw a lot of the changes of. Uh, he, she, to their, stuff like that, I saw a lot of that kind of stuff in there, so I mean, that's kinda. You know, whether you agree with that or not, that's kind of, that was, it seemed to be quite a bit, but if, on the first read, if you. Um. Could let me know, like. Just what do you, what do you think of some of the change, maybe some of the bigger ones would be, not the he, she, and their stuff, but you know, more of the.
That's a fair question, and I'm not really prepared to answer all that, uh, that right now, um, I was hoping that that, yeah.
I've been, I've been trying to catch up on, there's a lot there.
Yeah, there's way too much, I agree, um. I, you know, I, I wouldn't be able to do justice to the question right now.
No, it's okay, I, I guess I'd be, um. I need a little more time to kind of go through those, I mean, you know, I remember Bob saying a long time ago, I mean, uh. Bob, you and I have coffee like eight years ago, and you said, Dave, these policies get really long and dry, boy, he. He was right, you know, I mean, you're going through these things and stuff, so. I, I tried plugging away the last number of days at it, so I probably just need a little more time to. Go through and see the changes, cause a lot of them seem to be the real, just minor word changes to me. If there's anything bigger, I haven't picked up on it yet.
There's also, I would say, Dave, when you're reviewing, well, for the whole board, when you're reviewing them, um, often too, a lot of the language changes are, are directed straight from Oregon statute, so. Um, you know, if you have questions, that's great, we can talk about it, but I'll, I'll let you know, I mean, a lot of times we have questions, for example. Um, the word capable came up, uh, in relation to a policy that we were speaking with Spencer about. Why is there this word capable, and what does it mean, right? So he has to, well, let me go back and I'll find that for you, and. So the, the committee does ask those questions, but it's always good to have more sets of eyes on the policies to ask those questions as well, and you'll. The way that, one of the reasons why there's so many pages is because we've put in the deleted ones and the proposed ones, so you can see.
Yeah.
That too, yeah, and then, of course, the highlights. So we've got homework for two weeks, so they'll be in the consent agenda on the next packet, but if there are, you know, specific ones that you as a board member would like to pull out and have discussion for. We'll put those at the end of the agenda for two weeks from now.
Dave, uh, Dave, I'll try to see what I can do about going back through my notes, which are incomplete, there were some times when I wasn't in a position to take notes. Uh, and try to find the ones that are substantive in significant ways. Uh, that I've noticed, and maybe that'll help your work, and if I can share that a week ahead of time for people, I'll try to get that done.
Well, I appreciate that, thanks, Ron, I know you're really good about all that stuff, um. That, that's something that, uh, yeah. One of your, one of your top skills.
No. Any other questions around the first reads? Okay, we all have our homework. So, our next meeting is gonna be June eighth, not forgetting anything, am I? No, okay, good, June eighth, uh, will be our next meeting, we, um, some of the agenda items potentially on that one will. Uh, be the consent agenda, of course, with those policies, climate and culture report, um, adopting the budget, we'll revisit the, um, proposed police resolution. Um, oh, presenter, proposed twenty-one, twenty-two board meeting calendar. Um, discuss translation services for next year's board meetings, um, also have our discussion around our summer board retreat. Um. And Jen, what is the CMGC findings resolution?
Um, I think.
That has to do with our bond process, um, I'm not entirely sure what it is, it was me putting a placeholder as I listen in to our owner's rep, and they. Decide about, when they mention things that may require board action, I tried to include them onto potential um. Agenda items, so I'll be working again with Cornerstone to ask what that is exactly and how we move forward, Joe may know more specifically what it is.
In a nutshell, so CMGC is the construction, um, construction management and general contractor, and then we also have a design bid build, and so there's a. Two different kind of ways to, we'll have different kinds of projects that do it differently, so usually in larger, more complex projects, we use a CMGC process that brings the general contractor on earlier. To work with the architects as they finalize plans, so things like, um, Dundee and possibly Edwards are more complex and, and the high school. And then in a design bid build, uh, that's when you put together your plan, then go out, and they're usually smaller projects that, that smaller contractors can go after, and they're a hard bid. Uh, that we go through a process, so there's just some differentials on some things that we have to make some decisions on, so we'll bring more information with that next time, but that's really the two differences between the. Um, the kinds of construction projects that we'll, that we'll be doing during the bond.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hey, Brandy?
Yep.
I, I did have a quick question, I, in a statement, is, uh, Jen Nelson, uh, not met her, thanks Jen for being part of this. Uh. So when we have questions about what's going on, I know Greg's always been one answering those, so, so should we go directly to Jen now and just ignore Greg, is that gonna hurt his feelings, or? Greg's out of the loop, he just, would, do we just go right to Jen?
You gotta work harder to hurt my feelings than that, Dave.
Thanks again, no, I just wanted to make sure, cause I don't wanna. Go to the wrong person here, cause I keep seeing Jen Nelson's name and. Not you, so. Hi, Jen, how are you doing?
Hello. Yes, um, if you have any questions about your board packets or anything that's coming up on the agendas and things like that, anything that you would have normally gone to Greg for as your board secretary, I am now in that role, so I will happily answer those questions or find someone who can.
So Jen, you know, when we're back in person, I think Greg was going to be responsible for like cinnamon rolls, fudge, stuff like that, so.
Oh, okay, alright.
He's gonna do that stuff, so.
I'll get the menu from him.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian, did you have a question?
I just have, uh, one thing that I feel like I have to say, or I'm not gonna be asleep tonight, um, I just wanna say, I was completely appalled. By Director Penya's comments, that because her preferred candidate did not win election, that that is somehow an indictment. Of white supremacy in our community, that is. Just unbelievable to say that in a public meeting about people who just reelected you. And do better.
Okay, Brian, Brian, let's calm it down, I think that. It would be amazing if you and Inez could get to a place in a relationship where you two could meet and have a positive conversation, thank you for sharing your thoughts. With that, I'm gonna close this meeting. Adjourn.